Sixteenth work session of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called the order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the chair, and we will start our meeting with a roll call to account for all of our members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Array.
Aye.
Ms. Brophy.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Mr. Hafer.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heinel. Mr. Hinton. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Perlow. Mr. Mr. Perlow? You don't have your audio on. That's okay. I see you. Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Thank you all.
I'm here, Madam Chair. Sorry, I'm late.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you, Mr. Heinel. I would like to welcome all of the board members and the members of the public that are here to join us this evening for our third comprehensive zoning map process of 2024 work session. This evening, our objective is to review and vote on issues from District Three and District Six in an orderly manner. We will first vote on items that were not sequestered for further discussion for tonight. If issues were not raised sequestered, we will assume that the board would like to accept the staff's recommendation as such. We will take a vote to accept the staff's recommendation for all of those items. Afterwards, we will take sequestered issues one at a time in chronological order. I asked the board members who requested an item to be sequestered to share their questions, our perspectives on why they did not agree with the staff's recommendation. The staff will then share their rationale on the county's position. And then the board members will have an opportunity to make a motion as they see fit, and then we'll have a vote. We will begin with issues and and three, then go to six. But before we before we begin, from our last meeting, we need to resolve a related issue for 5.002 and 5.021. Ms. Brophy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to remind the planning board members, this was the issue we voted on that had a split zoning. 021 was the one that had CB in the front portion, and then it had DR 3.5 in the back portion. So the front portion was on Bel Air Road, and the back was on Ford Road. So just to kind of remind everybody, but there was an issue that overlapped into it from across the street, across Bel Air Road, right? So it was like 002 and 021. So I just want to make a clarifying motion so that everybody is clear on what's going on. Thank you so much for that, Ms. Meacham. So you can see on the bottom portion of the screen there, 002 jumped across the street into 021. So I want to clarify my motion, and if anybody has any questions after, you know, please feel free to ask. So I'd like to make a motion to clarify the board's approval of five of issues 5002 and 5021. I would like to recommend that for 5021, we accept the petitioner's change to DR 16 for the acreage on their request, including the DR 16 for the overlapping portion of 5-002. The remaining portion of 5-002 will remain DR 3.58.
Questions from the board? Not hearing any? Emily, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, so that that is my motion to clarify our approval from last week of 5002 to 5021.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German. Ms. German?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hafer.
Same.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis. McGinnis isn't on? Mr. Per- oh, you are. Thank you. Ms. Ms. Mr. Perlow.
Yes.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson. Ms. Wolfson. Okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, our sequestered issue for District Six include the following issues. 3005, 3012, 3013, 3014, 3021, 3029, 3031, 3034, 3036, 3039, 3040, 3044, and 3051. Before we begin-
3005, you put that in? That was in there?
3051. I don't-
3005 was one that I sequestered.
Yeah, that was the first one I read.
I didn't hear you. That's why I was asking. Thank you.
It's it is there.
Okay.
Before we begin, do we have any additional issues we need to sequester?
I have some that I will remove by my Madam Chairwoman.
Okay.
I'd like to remove 3020. 30-
Does any other board members have an issue with that? No? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Perlow.
3021.
Okay.
3039, 3040, and 3051.
Thank you, Mr. Perlow. Does any board members have an issue with those being removed from the sequestered list? Okay, not hearing any? May I entertain a motion to accept staff's recommendations for all non-sequestered District Three issues?
Be it moved that the planning board accepts the recommendations of the planning board staff for the log of issues in District Three, with the exception of the sequestered issues just described by Chairwoman Hafford.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Then motion carries. Okay, we will now go with the sequestered issue. The first one is 3005. And this was sequestered by Mr. Warren, so we'll let you begin.
Yeah, I I talked to Steve a little bit about this, and I, Steve, I get what you're saying about the RC seven versus RC two. But we got a letter from from a neighbor this week, and I was reading the the letter. It looks like they want to subdivide one property off here and build an additional house, which I don't have a problem with. I would throw it to staff to, you know, tell me, you know, is it a spot zoning issue or what from that standpoint? But seems like he's been there for a long time. The the neighbor has, he's been the neighbor for since 1960, and the neighbor said they're great neighbors and was very much in support of it. So I know that you don't have a lot of neighbors when you're out in that area. So I thought it it was something that we should accept and allow them the ability to subdivide one lot off. So I throw it to staff just to make sure I'm not crazy, but I think that's something we should support.
Mr. Warren, I don't think staff can judge whether you're crazy or not.
Well, that's an easy one. That's an easy one to judge. The answer is yes.
So for this issue, there are actually two houses that are existing. One that was built when the current owners, I guess, purchased the property in the 1960s, and another house was built sometime after that. And so they are requesting the change in order to subdivide those houses onto separate parcels.
And even more, I would think it's a good idea to let them do that. As a banker, I know they couldn't get loans for those other houses, and this this makes more sense to me that we would let them do it.
Couldn't that be done with RC five?
It's my understanding with the current zoning classification, they don't have any further ability to subdivide any further density.
Okay.
For this one, PAI did submit a comment that even with a change of zoning does not guarantee a minor subdivision approval. Just as a note.
Well.
Questions from the board?
I would agree it makes sense to let them have individual lots. They would have to sell both houses if they ever wanted to sell it as it presently sits.
Or refi. Yeah, I'll make the motion to allow or to provide or I'll make the motion to accept their requesters' request of RC two for 8.52 acres.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. There's no other questions?
It's just one question, please. How many properties in RC two are less than 50 acres? Probably a whole lot. And are we setting a precedent here for others to come forward and request minor subdivisions in RC two?
I can't answer the zoning, but I think that you don't have that many properties that have two homes on it unless they're pre Baltimore County zoning. I think that, again, they're going to have a difficulty someday being able to sell. They'd have to sell both houses, and it just doesn't make sense to not give them. They got to go through the minor sub, you know, requirements. And if it qualifies the rest of the way for the county, I think it's reasonable.
Any other questions or comments? Not hearing any? Are we prepared to vote? We'll start with Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman. Not here? Mr. Heinel. Mr. Heinel. Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Perlow.
Yes.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Motion carries.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I missed that, but I'm a yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next issue is 3-012. Ms. Brophy, you sequestered this issue.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is almost similar to what Todd had mentioned, the last one. This petitioner actually showed up at the public hearing. I'm not sure if everybody remembers, but the petitioner themselves showed up as well as one other person. And basically, they're asking for permission to build a house for their son to continue farming the land. So, you know, this is something requesting from an RC two to an RC five. Similar to what Todd said, I'm not super familiar with the rural zones, but I think RC six or RC five will get them to where they need just to put a house on the farm for their son. But that is why I I sequestered this. I I I think that the justification makes sense, and they even said that they may place the property into agricultural land preservation as well. And if you look at the map that Ms. Meacham has up there, there's other single-family houses around there and other zones that are RC six around there as well. So I make a motion to grant the petitioner their request for the zoning change from RC two to RC five.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I I oppose that. I think they can put their house on that property without the change.
Yeah, that was actually good. This is Chris. That was actually going to be my question is, do we not allow family farmers to put extra houses for their family on their property?
So I can give a little background on this one. This property is actually, so the larger property here, the neighborhood, basically, that you can see, this property was developed as part of that development as a major subdivision, when major subdivisions were still allowed in this area. Major subdivisions are no longer allowed in tier four areas. So this larger farm piece that is a portion of or is the where the parents live has no further development rights because it was the ag remainder left over after the major subdivision happened. As a point of clarification, they do not farm the property. They lease the property. So it's not a case of, you know, continuing on the family farm. It's adding another density in this area that was already maximized the full development potential earlier. But they did the major subdivision.
But they can build a house on that farm though, can't they?
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mike.
They can build a house on that farm though, can't they?
The house, so you see to the north, the kind of driveway, that's where the house on the farm exists.
We're only changing within the yellow area. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the 3.5 acre requested area.
Megan, you said they leased the they leased the farm out, but they but the family still does live on the land, correct?
They're the landowners. Yep.
Okay.
When I looked the property up on SSTAT today, it says there is indeed a house, but it's not owner occupied. So why isn't the son living in that house? Looks to me like just another opportunity to build another house when they gave up those rights when they did the subdivision.
Megan, is this also subject to an ag easement?
It does not have an ag easement on it. There are portions of the property that are in forest buffer and environmental buffers related to the major subdivision. So portions of it are considered protected.
But by granting this, we go beyond what the major subdivision allowed when it was created?
Yes, it's my understanding at the time that the major subdivision was done, they maximized their density.
I approve the change.
What was that that you were just putting up that piece, Ms. Meacham? What is that showing on?
This is the active development plans, and then the other piece is the tier data. This shows that it's tier four.
Oh, got it. Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Now, Ms. Go ahead.
We confirm, Ms. Hafford, the property, the the home, the residence on the home is or is not owner occupied? Because we got conflicting proof.
Why, the staff said it was not.
It was not? Okay. I thought they said it was owner occupied.
I do not know, but the SDAT information that is showing on the screen now shows that it is not home owner occupied.
Okay.
So it could be a rent- Excuse me. Does that mean it could be a rental property and not? Right? So it could be a rental property of someone else other than the title owner could be renting it?
Or it could be not a homestead. That's the other, could be a non-homestead.
Yeah, and maybe it's the homestead tax credit that they use. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, based on what the petitioner said at the public hearing, I mean, I thought it was owner occupied, but like, I think Ms. Wolfson looked it up on SSTAT. I mean, if it's non-owner occupied and they're just leasing it out for additional, I mean, I I'll withdraw my motion. I I thought that they were actually on there, and they were just trying to build an additional house for the son on the land.
That being said, Ms. Brophy, do you want to modify your motion?
Um, yes. I will modify my motion to accept staff recommendations for issue 3-012.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halepka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Perlow.
Yes.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Opposed.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have 3-013 raised by Mr. Perlow. Mr. Perlow?
Yeah. The petitioner had asked for BLCR. I look at most of this area along Jarrettsville Pike and Four Corners and all, you know, as being much more commercially, you know, used both for office and a lot of different businesses at that point. And I thought it was reasonable for their request here along the Pike itself to have it. You can see the, you know, the businesses that are there and, you know, asking for, you know, the BL I didn't think was unreasonable at that point.
Yeah, I know this area pretty well, and I mean, the clients have a large grocery store there. There's strip mall there. I mean, there's a ton of-
There's all kinds of stores. There's a whole shopping center.
Two shopping centers, yeah.
With a Safeway side of the street.
Yeah, so on both sides of the street, there's shopping centers. And 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 a and a large restaurant slash liquor store. I mean, I go there a lot. I have a friend that lives by there and-
You go to the restaurant or the liquor store, Todd?
Well, depends on if I'm on a planning board meeting, probably liquor store, but no, the the restaurant mostly, so. But no, I I agree with you, Howard, that this is this is a commercial corridor.
Board members, any questions? Planning staff, any comments?
So I will say we had a number of issues that were in the Jacksonville area. All of them, including this one, were on the periphery of the commercial areas. This one in particular was, we had several comments at the public hearings about it. This one is primarily currently RC five, and it abuts an ROA parcel, but all the rest around it is into the residential and RC five area. So this issue and all of the other issues in Jacksonville, we recommended retaining the existing zoning because also there is a community plan in this area that is in the process of being updated. And the Greater Jacksonville Community Association, who is working on updating the plan, these zoning changes would not be in accordance with the existing community plan or what they are considering in their updates of the plan. So that's what I have to say about this one.
Well, I feel that- I have opposition to that, so I I oppose it myself. Oppose change.
Could I ask what's there now?
So this particular property, there is a house. It may be vacant. And then much of it is just open lawn, basically.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I mean, it's across from tennis courts and basketball courts. The area is the commercial area. If not, it's a long ride into Towson to do shopping and other things. I don't think it's, you know, that major, we're talking about, you know, two acres. Looks bigger there, but it is only two acres that we're talking about. And I think it's a reasonable, you know, request to have it used, especially if it is vacant. Look, I talked to some of the other people that had put in their motions. You know, they're talking to the association. I don't know, you know, whether these people have not, but I do feel that it's reasonable knowing the surrounding area at that point.
And a point of clarity too, Megan, so with the CR, with the rural commercial, that does also put some design standards in place for that, right?
Yes, it is an overlay that has certain additional restrictions, you know, taking into account the rural area.
Right, considering it's like adjacent to ROA but across from BLCR and everything like that. It would take some of that into consideration in the design, right?
There are certain size limitations, I believe, and, as you say, design considerations.
There are compatibility standards in the CR.
I mean, I, when I look at, when I drive the area, I see an awful lot of old homes that have been turned into offices, and I just think that it's, you know, in the, close enough to the all the rest of the area that it should be, the change should be made.
You making a motion?
Are we, any other questions or comments?
If you'd like, that for issue 3-013, that the petitioner's requested zoning of BLCR, the 2.01 acres, is accepted or approved.
Second.
Okay, were any other questions or comments?
Madam Chair, I'm a- the fact that this is across the street from a school, I don't think is determinative. And what we are seeing with this requested change is something that we see along a lot of corridors throughout the county is that as the neighborhood changes, literally, the next time the property to the south comes in, they will say, well, we have BL and we want BL as well. The the comment from Ms. Benjamin about the Jacksonville plan, I think, is really critical from the planning staff's perspective because we'd like to look at areas holistically, and the community plan has not really focused on each individual property. It is ROA, and it still allows business activity. It's just not as intense, certainly, as a BL zone.
It's only 0.07 of ROA, Steve. And, you know, again, I think that our county needs to have some commercial, if that's the word, I'm not saying it's going to be commercial, but I think needs to have-
BL is commercial, Howard. Don't don't say it's not going to be commercial. You don't go BL if you want to build a house. You want to be commercial. So it's-
My point is that it's not commercial like the client shopping center or the other side.
Commercial district, and that was a significant basis for the staff's recommendation.
Okay. I support the staff recommendation. I do, I also support the community association's recommendation. We don't have theirs yet.
Um, we did have four people. I'm not sure if you were at that hearing, Howard, but there were, I'm showing there were four people that, um, were opposing it. And I believe we do have a letter from the association opposing it.
Made a motion.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion. We have a second. Are we ready for a roll call? Not hearing any other questions. Mr. Array.
No.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
No.
Mr. Hafer.
No.
Mr. Heinel.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
No.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGinnis.
No.
Mr. Perlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Six to seven?
Yeah, you got seven noes?
Seven noes and six yeses.
Yes, that's what I got. It's crystal.
Okay, motion does not carry. Okay, on to three dash zero one four.
Nancy, Nancy, you have to have a motion. You have to do something with it. It can't just stop.
What do you mean?
We need another motion for the board's.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's.
Do we accept staff?
Second.
All right. All right. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
No.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heinel.
No.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Warren.
No.
Mr. Perlo.
No.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next. Three dash zero one four. This is from Mrs. Brophy and Mr. Perlo. Ms. Brophy, do you want to start first?
Sure. Thank you. So this is basically the Stella Maris Mercy Ridge property. So, um, I'm sure you guys have seen, we've received a lot of information on this property. It's existed on the site prior to zoning regulations. It started in the 1950s. Had an addition done in the seventies and has basically been non-conforming since. I know the petitioner is definitely engaged in conversation with the surrounding communities to reassure them that this request is not for redevelopment or additions, but basically to place, um, the current use into stopper zoning. It's basically an assisted living medical facility with Mercy Ridge and Stella Maris. Um, it's been there for a long time. The main reason that I think we should grant this to them is the non-conforming status. I'm sure a lot of you know, it actually creates a lot of hardships for the owners. They want to do any capital improvements or financing. The fact that they're non-conforming use makes it a lot more difficult for them to upgrade the property. So, um, you know, I'll, I'll let Mr. Perlo add some comments as well.
Well, I chaired, you know, a very similar facility for four years in the city. I know the need for, um, senior and, um, long-term care facilities is needed. They've told us that it is not to expand it and build any, um, kind of housing on the more vacant areas, if you wish. Um, I don't know that someday there is a need, um, estimated just in the Baltimore area for another 20,000 units of assisted living. Uh, the community, um, continues to age here in Baltimore. Um, our county continues to age. So if they came back someday and wanted to, um, put some additional, you know, assisted living, um, or long-term care, I wouldn't personally be against it. Um, I think it's been there, been a good neighbor, and I think many of the people that live in the area probably have family members that have moved into the facility over time. And I think it makes sense to give them what is proper. So it's not, um, you know, the old zoning that doesn't comply or doesn't, uh, match up right now. So I believe that it would be a good idea for them to have the, uh, the DR. Sorry. Yes, DR 16, 15. I can't see. Need my glasses.
Sixteen, sixteen's the right, sixteen's the right number.
So Emily, you want to make the motion?
Sure. Um, I make a motion to grant the petitioner their request for the zoning change from RC four to DR 16.
I second it.
Any other questions or comments? Not hearing any. We'll do a roll call. Mr. Array.
Can you come back to me later, please?
Sure, sure. Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Mr. Array?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we're on to three dash zero two nine. Mr. Perlo.
I think I meant to delete that because I believe planning staff gave them, give me one second, please.
This was a same to same request.
Yes. So you, the planning staff gave them what they requested. So I will make a motion to, um, delete the sequester or just to approve the planning staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Howard.
Madden Chair, before a vote, um, we found unfortunately, the, uh, the petitioner did not make it clear how they intended to use the property. Um, and so that, as we've seen with other same to same requests that handsprints the, the department in making recommendations. We, we subsequently learned or heard that they intend to take this down, probably and build some residential units. But when we see a same to same and there's no community plan or other, uh, sort of system around which we can make a, a recommendation, we are probably, we're very constrained. So that's just for subsequent context to the actual submission.
Thank you.
So would, would planning be okay with like, uh, MLCCC or BLCCC or BMCCC? Is that?
I, I don't know. We didn't consider that, Mr. Warren. So I, I don't know if we would be or not, but all I know is we had in front of us a request that didn't give us any guidance. So we were limited how we could look at this.
Mr. Lafferty, I, is it correct that, I guess, in, in, uh, previous CZMP, processes that same to same was used? Cause I've, I've seen it a couple, we've seen it uh, several times already, and I think we're going to see it again. Where it's, it's to spark conversation, the same to same? Correct.
I'll defer to someone like Amy who's been around many more of these than I have. I understand, at least in 2020, uh, the department's position was similar that if we didn't have any direct justification, that we then didn't weigh in.
Um, yeah, that's correct. I mean, um, whether people say that they are raising it same to same because they want to start a conversation or not, I mean, those just really aren't the facts when we're looking at an issue we have what's, you know, before us, um, the request and any justification. So, you know, as, as long as I can remember, we typically have just treated them at face value that that was what was requested. And unless we have some other justification or written information, um, there's really not much we can, we can do with the issue otherwise.
Okay.
Howard, I, Howard, I would support, uh, like a BLCCC if that's, if they want to build houses. And we need housing. So I.
I was, I was told that they had talked about a senior living facility here possibly. Again, I believe that there is a great need in our community for that. So I think that that would be okay with me. I think that it, you know, needs something else. This is a very rundown property. When I get off the, uh, eighty-three there. You know, they're going to have to go through the planning process if that's what they want. Um, but I think that it's definitely needs to be redeveloped without question. So I would be, except, I would accept that.
But Mr. Perlo, do you still want to change your motion?
Um, I would make a motion that we, um, that, I make a motion that the zoning be, um, be BL, what is it? BLCCC? I'm sorry.
Be, be modified to BLCCC.
Yeah, to BLCCC.
And may I ask the basis?
Because I think the building, knowing some of the issues, Lisa and other people are, that I'd like to see us get rid of the hotel that's there. It's not a very pleasant experience from comments from clients that own property along Green Spring Drive. And, you know, I think that, uh, if, if housing is what's neat, is, is what's proposed, then the planning department will have the ability to review that at that time. But leaving it where it is, I don't think that that's going to happen.
We don't know what has been proposed, Mr. Pearl. That's the challenge.
Understand, but, you know, the, the.
Classification online says, applicant has placed the zoning of the property issue to allow for consideration of a new zoning classification that would permit the conversion of the building to residential units. At the time of filing, the goal was to submit the request to get into the process, quote unquote. No zoning classification was, uh, selected. It's, it, the applicant has engaged in productive conversations with the leadership of the GTTC. And in short term, it will be working to answer the questions and comments provided by members. So it sounds like they're going from the hotel to residential. That's, that's the goal.
And I would second that motion that Howard put in.
Um, from planning, is it typical to, um, have a senior living facility surrounded by, um, IM, uh, the exist MLIM? Uh, it doesn't appear to be very walkable for seniors. Um, it doesn't look like there's much for them to do. It looks like they'd be pretty isolated there. I mean, I understand about the housing. I, I get it. But i- is this the appropriate place to, to isolate seniors?
I wouldn't, I would disagree with you a little bit, Kathy. You've got restaurants along Green Spring. You've got the shopping centers as you go down, um, Timonium Road on the right, um, grocery stores and other things there. Um, when you say walkable, I can't tell you, you know, what that would mean, but they can run a shuttle from a senior building. They do that in Pikesville all the time. Finding the land to build these facilities is very difficult. You know, Weinberg Foundation has built four or five in Pikesville because of the need. And I think that this is as walkable, you know, in that area as well. I don't remember the name of the street that the, uh, the shop rate is on and all, but it's, it's a fairly easy walk, I would think, or a very easy, um, neighborhood shuttle that a lot of the senior facilities do provide.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Who submitted the request for the, that it be an issue? Was it the property owner or the community?
Property owner.
Okay. And then when Kathy read the comments, I didn't hear senior residences. I heard residences. So I'm wondering if. Pardon?
I'm sorry. I may have attached that.
Right. So I didn't hear, I, I, it sounds to me like they want to convert the hotel into condos. Just any age condo, all age condo.
I don't know if it's set in stone, to be perfectly honest, Ms. Haffer, I, I, Mr. Hafer, I believe it's, um, just in, they wanted us more with the, with the community.
Okay, thank you.
Due to the lack of information, I oppose the change.
All right. Well, are there any other questions or comments? We have a motion. We have a second. Are we ready for a roll call? Mr. Array. Mr. Array.
Oh, sorry. I'm thinking about this. I'm sorry.
Do you not want your name to start with an A?
I wish my name started with a Z.
We'll call you Zarray. How's that?
I'm always the first.
Would you like me to come back, Mr. Array?
Yes, please. I'm stupid.
Okay. Ms. Brophy?
No.
Ms. German?
No.
Mr. Hafer?
No.
Mr. Heckman? No, I'm sorry. Mr. Heinel? Mr. Heinel? Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
No.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
No.
Mr. Array?
No.
A motion does not carry. So we, we have, we have to have a second motion.
I move to, um, adopt the planning staff recommendations.
Okay. Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Heinel? Mr. Heinel? Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
No.
Ms. Panero? Mr. Warren?
No.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Heinel, are you here still? Okay.
Does not look like he is, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, the next issue is three dash zero three one. Mr. Warren.
So this is a commercial property, um, on, uh, just off of Padonia Road. Um, it's got like an old dilapidated one-story house and an old, uh, small commercial facility uh, on the property. It's currently BL, BLCCC and OR one. Again, I, you know, my move to try to create housing inside the Erdle is, that's all we can do. And the CCC gives us the capacity to do that, build apartments, build, build housing. So, you know, I, you know, I would move for the requested BMCCC on the property. You know, or, or BLCCC is fine too. I'm, I'm just, that was the question BM, but BL is BM or BL I would be satisfied with. Jen, Jen, can you zoom out a little bit so we can kind of see the surrounding zones if you don't mind? Thank you. Okay. So it's already surrounded by a bunch of commercial BL, BL CCC.
Yes, directly across the street. So.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Todd, do you know, um, cause you did say, I mean, it seems like BL and BL CCC are a little bit more surrounding. Do you know, like, if there was a reason they were asking for BM CCC? I mean, I know the CCC. I, I don't know. My only fear with this is I found out in District One when I was messing around with a bunch of areas around the security mall. It, it gets tricky with the BM versus the BL. If I take the BM away and they're utilizing this property for commercial use that needs BM, now I'm, I'm taking something away from them. So that's why I said the BM CCC. Um, but I, I guess I'll make the motion BM CCC. But I, I, you know, I was comfortable with either BM or BL CCC.
Could we hear from the staff as to why, uh, they made the recommendation they did and, and about their thoughts on BM versus BL versus OR?
Sure. So I'll add that we took a close look at this one and we ultimately recommended retaining the existing zoning. It is not, um, directly, though it is very close, you know, to York Road and Padonia Road. It is not fronting those roads and we felt it was encroaching, uh, somewhat more into the neighborhood. And that's why we recommended retaining the existing zoning there. And with the master plan, this was in an area that we couldn't see that it, um, was meeting, uh, the, you know, the new master plan. We didn't think that the change would be compatible.
It doesn't appear to be that much in the property to the north of Adams Avenue. I mean, it's zoned RO. I only see three or four houses there, it looks like. I'm not sure what's up along, uh, Greenside Drive there, that last facility, but it looks somewhat large. So I think there is somewhat of a natural buffer to the houses that are further back along Gibbons Boulevard.
It's my belief the houses to the north are RO anyways. So it's, it's, they're commercial anyways. So.
I understand.
Yeah. So, I mean, they're, they're, they're not residential. They're RO. So I guess they could be residential office, but they're, it's already residential office. So. Again, guys, we, we, we gotta find ways that we can develop inside the Erdle. This is in a very densely, um, you know, developed area. Uh, and by giving the triple Cs, it gives us the capacity, um, for the opportunity for, you know, mixed-use development where you can have commercial and residential together. And I don't.
Given it's sort of landlocked, kind of landlocked, um, position, I'd be willing to support the BL CCC, Todd.
Okay, that, that's fine. I, to be honest with you, Kathy, I, you know more about BM, BL than I do. Uh, so I, I'm, I'm okay with, I would, I'll change my motion to BL CCC. My, my only fear, Kathy, is what I said before that I, I put some people in a bad spot and other ones. So that's why I'm, I'm a little leery of that. But they have BL CCC right now, so I don't think that's an issue. So I, I'm fine with BL CCC. I'll, I'll amend my motion to that. Yeah. And Todd, a lot of their land is OR right now anyways. Okay. Yeah. I just, I, I just, it was just a fear of mine that I don't know enough to know that I'm causing a problem. So. So, so.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Not hearing any? We'll go for a roll call. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness. Mr. Pearlau.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, on to three dash zero three four, sequestered by Ms. Brophy.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So, um, as you can see, um, that Ms. Meacham has up there. So this is an existing car dealership. This is Jerry Chevrolet and it already has BM AS along the whole front portion, um, which is the bottom of your screen along Joppa Road. So this request is just for additional acreage on the same property to the top right-ish area on the screen, um, to allow the same AS overlay. It basically gives them functionality around the property because it's a car dealership with a service center right now. And it's literally across the street from other shopping centers. It's consistent with Master Plan 2030. It's in the Lock Raven CRD. Um, I think it makes sense to actually, um, allow the AS overlay in this instance.
Any questions?
So Emily.
Go ahead.
Uh, it, it's not changing, but it's, it's simply putting on the backside that they've already developed.
Correct. Yeah. You can see it's actually a back part of their building is already in that top right area where Ms. Meacham has her arrow moving around. So the whole front bottom rectangular piece along Joppa is already BM AS. So they're literally just adding that piece in the back.
But it really cuts their building in half without having the AS on the back. So where do you do the service work, I guess?
Right. Okay. Any questions or comments from the staff? All right, Ms. Brophy, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to grant the petitioner their request for the zoning change of the 3.66 acres, um, from BM to BM AS.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGuinness.
Yes.
Mr. Pearlau.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I get to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Wolfson. Oh, you're on the next page on this sheet. No, your name isn't on this sheet.
Yes.
Oh, lordy, lordy, I can never win. All right. Motion carries three dash zero three six. Oh, my goodness. And that is by Mr. Pearlau. Mr. Pearlau.
Uh, I'm sorry. I'm just looking at my notes. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
I will, um, make a motion to accept the, uh, staff recommendation.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Which one are we on?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
I thought it was Todd. I thought it was Todd's.
Oh, uh, yeah, Todd.
It, it actually is my motion. That's what I was saying. What the heck? Why are we?
Okay.
Uh, it's, 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 it's actually the same parcel that we just voted on, basically. Um.
No, it's not.
Uh, let me look at my notes here because I thought this was at the same corner. Hold on, let me. Oh, God. Sorry, guys. If you, if you look on the map, Todd, it, it's slightly separated. I mean, it's adjacent to the Chevrolet area, but it's just. Yeah, but it's the same. I, I, I know these people. It's the same people. It's like, it's right at that. I mean, this is, this is, this was, that, this was historically, um, BL in the past and, uh, was changed during last cycle by a different, um, councilman to DR one. But if you guys look at the map, this is about a tenth of the mile off of six ninety-five at a major intersection with major commercial around it. Um, I actually called staff on this earlier today. Cause I, I, my thought was, why wouldn't we put CCC on this, um, parcel? I know there's some pushback that they don't want any more apartments in that, that corridor. Um, but the, the existing property that, that Jerry's owns is BM. So making this BM, I think, is appropriate. Um, and, you know, for any further, you know, I would take further feedback, but, uh, you know, I, I think that BM on this parcel, again, makes sense. I know Todd or David downzoned a ton of stuff. Uh, but I, I just, this doesn't make sense. I think they were afraid that they were going to put more apartments there when they did that.
Can I ask, uh, maybe Taylor, somebody along Joppa Road, those first couple pieces below thirty-six? Do we know what they are zoned or can we call that up? I don't know. Those two, yeah.
What do we have, Jen?
My, I guess my reason to, you know, I don't know that it's ever going to get built is DR one, um, that piece. It's just going to sit there as a vacant piece. Um, I know in the past zoning cycles, we've done some buffers to buffer those houses along Littlewood Road possibly. They might be happy to know that that's the case. Um, you know, but I wanted to see what the zoning was along East Joppa Road there in those two buildings that I guess you were flashing.
Yeah.
To the, to the west.
All of those are BM. That's the BM zone right there.
So.
Again, it was a vacant piece of property that, to David Downzone. I just, yeah. Again, the, this guy, uh, has been a great citizen. They have Jerry's Toyota. They have Jerry's Chevrolet. Jerry's Chevrolet is one of the first Chevy dealerships in the country. The, the father is a, a, was a great man. He passed away. I've bought vehicles from these guys. They're, they're good people, uh, you know, and I, it, you know, I, I would fall back to BL at least, but I think it's, BM is all around them. It, it should be BM.
I, I guess BM, I, I weigh in to say that BM is not all around them because it's residential on at least two sides, plus a vacant DR five-five site in that upper right-hand corner. So that while DR one may not be the best, uh, use of that, it may be better off as DR five-five where you can build residential coming off of Mountain Avenue. So I would just, just respectfully disagree, Mr. Warren, that it's business zoning surrounding this site.
I guess I was saying, as you drive into that site, it's all business zoning. It's, it's.
We can get to that site. It's landlocked.
Todd, can I make a motion? See if you like it or not?
Sure.
Um, I would make a motion that three dash oh three six be BM with a covenant to buffer the area by, um, twenty-five feet along the residential property that is to the west of the property and to the north of the property.
I would accept that. I'll second.
I have a question. Can this covenant be enforced realistically?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, we've done it the past, uh, for my seventeen, eighteen years on this board. And I think that, though different than we hear when we're along York Road or Liberty Road and there's residential right behind a gas station and we've required them to buffer, build a wall, do other things to, um, do the neighborhood association can do. But I think that if I'm living in the houses along Littlewood, I'd love to have, you know, a whole buffer of landscaping and a wall or something at that point. Without question. And along the north side too, looks like where the housing is. Um, you can't get, you can't offer everything, but, uh, you know, I do think that's a reasonable request rather than seeing a piece of land that probably has very minimal taxes on it, um, you know, be made, um, looking at our tax base here in the county because we're going to have a problem in a few years if we don't try to grow our, our tax base.
I just want to say I would support the covenant if it was at least seventy-five feet. On District One, I compromised with a fifteen-foot, um, buffer. And I woke up in the middle of the night and couldn't think of a tree, one tree that wasn't fifteen feet wide. So I'm not sure that, what did you say? Twenty-five?
I said twenty-five feet.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'd go for seventy-five feet. That's more realistic.
Well, I mean, I put the number in to require a minimum, but I mean, that, let them negotiate it. I don't think, I don't know how big the piece is. I don't know what the measurements are along the south border and don't want to have it totally not usable because again, the only way you get a decent return to the county is if, you know, there's a value to it. And, um.
Chairwoman Hafer, can I make a statement?
Yes. Yes.
To my knowledge, um, in my time here at the county, the planning board, Northern County enforces any covenants. We've made, you know, the planning board may make a recommendation that a covenant be used, um, but we do not enforce those.
It wouldn't be. It would be the neighborhood association would be the covenant. They're the ones that would enforce it. We're not looking for the, we're not looking for the planning board to enforce it. We're looking for the councilmen to get them to agree that there would be a covenant to buffer the property.
All right. That being said, is there any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All right. Let's do a roll call. Mr. Array.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
What is the motion?
Mr. Pearlau, do you want to, uh, repeat it or?
My motion is to, um, accept the petitioner's requested zoning of BM, um, with a covenant between the neighborhood association and the petitioner to buffer the property for, I'll use the word, minimum of twenty-five feet, um, along the west and north boundaries of the property.
I'm second that. I'd second that.
Okay. You understand, Mr. Array?
Yeah, I, I just wanted him to repeat.
Okay. Are you ready to vote or would you like me to come back?
No, no, I'm ready to, yes.
Okay, yes. Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
No.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yeah.
Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. McGuinness. Mr. McGuinness. Did we lose Mr. McGuinness?
He's confused.
Okay. Mr. Pearlau.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
No.
Okay, Mr. McGuinness.
Yes.
How, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right. Next up, we have three dash zero four four, Ms. Panero and Mr. Pearlau. Ms. Panero, would you like to start?
Uh, the applicant for this, uh, rezoning, actually, or the owner, I should say, of the property just had a very productive meeting with the new president of, I believe it's the GTTC. I might be wrong with that, um, but it, with the community association. And apparently the president, the new president is very excited about the reinvestment. Um, for those that you don't, that don't know this area well, this is right on York Road, I believe, across from, um, a Burger King, Smythe Jewelers, several shopping centers. Um, there are shopping centers to the north. There's, uh, uh, retail to the north, retail to the south. Um, there is not retail to the.
Um, there is not retail to the east that is residential, which is why they're um, having the conversation with the community association. Um, they are interested in doing, amending to BL CCC. Um, this, that overlay provides more flexibility. Um, there is, funny enough, after we just had the last issue, uh, there is already an existing covenant from twenty sixteen. They would be willing to amend that covenant to uh, to state that there will not be a gas station located on that property. I know that is um, a concern. Of the residents there. Um, and quite frankly. I don't know how well another gas station would do at this location anyway, so it probably wouldn't be very uh. Uh, profitable for the property owner anyway. Um, the, it is a struggling. It is a bit of a struggling strip center compared to the other ones in, on York Road. And I think reinvestment would be very, very uh, wise for this property.
Ms. Panero, if I may ask, if they don't want a gas station or their covenant needs not to provide a gas station. What is the need for the AS?
It's not. They, they actually wanted to amend to um, to BL CCC. They want to amend their original um, BLA.
So your motion would be for BL CCC?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Perlo, is there anything you'd like to add to this?
No, I think um, there appears to be. What, four lots, five lots behind the property? Um, you know, I think that if it's going to be redeveloped, then hopefully they'll buffer those people that are to the rear of the property. Um, you know, and it'll again come before the planning department for whatever would be the redevelopment for it.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Panero, do you want to make a motion or?
Um, yes, my motion is to uh, rezone this property. Uh, the full one-point-five-three acres BL CCC.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Recuse.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka? Mr. Halipka?
Yes, can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes, now again, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Well, this is the conclusion of all of our issues in District Three. We will now move on to discussions in District Six. Um, we'll do the same as we did before. Um, we will take the staff's recommendation on all issues that are not sequestered. Um, the issues that are sequestered are six dash zero-zero-four. Six dash zero-zero-five. Six dash zero-zero-six. Six dash zero-zero-seven. Six dash zero-two-nine and six dash zero-three-three. Before we move on, is there any additional issues that need to be sequestered in District Six?
I would delete or remove uh, six dash zero-zero-six from being sequestered, Howard.
Um, the, Mr. Uh, Mr. Array also sequestered that one.
Then we can discuss it then. Ready?
Uh, Madam Chair, you, you said six dash zero-two-nine, but on the spreadsheet it says six dash zero-two-four. I just wanted to make sure it was clarified.
I'm sorry, I couldn't read my own handwriting. You're correct. Thank you for the correction. I greatly appreciate it.
You have your glasses on.
I know. But I, I couldn't read my own handwriting. All right, so is there any other issues that need to be sequestered? Not hearing any. Can I entertain a motion?
Be it moved if the planning board accepts their recommendations of the planning board staff for the log of issues in District Six, with the exception of the sequestered items listed by Chairwoman Hafford.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, motion carries. So we will start with six dash zero-zero-four, Mr. Warren.
So I, I talked to uh, to Mr. Lafferty about this today. Uh, I don't support the AS uh, on this site, so. Um, but this area's been a heated area for redevelopment. A number of friends around that area that uh, own properties and, and would love for. Some troubled hotels to go away. I've heard from Mr. Lafferty, one of them is sold and going to move away, so that's awesome news. Um, this is across the street from the old Belloc Diner. Which was a Starbucks for a little bit of time, but due to. You know, crime and, and lack of development in the area, it, it closed quickly. Uh, it's now, I think a, a Korean uh, store, so it is open. There's, there's something in there. Um, but I, I'm, I think that developing this area and utilizing again. I don't want to overutilize the CCC, but it's the tool we have. Um, to be able to um. Um. You know, really redevelop some of these areas and, and convert them and be able to, you know, the, you know. This is a, this is a um, an area again that's right off the Beltway. It's right at Crumb Ridge Ridge Road. I mean, this is. This is where we should be putting some additional density, so um, I'd like to look at. Uh, BM um, CCC. There is a commercial facility on the property that's a garage, so I think they need to BM now, so I don't, I don't want to take that away. Uh, from them, so um. Uh, there is a buffer. Uh, that they're proposing. Uh, five-point-five, um, and I would, I'd recommend that we, we put, we keep that buffer in there point oh-two, so. It would be uh, BM CCC. For one-point-seven-two and DR five-point-five for um, zero-point-zero-two acres.
So Todd, their request was BM AS, so you're saying you're suggesting BM CCC?
Yeah, I, I just, I don't think that's a place to put a rural farms on that corner. There's a gas station at the other corner. Um, that's not what that community wants. They really want this to be redeveloped. You know, they, they were devastated. They lost the Starbucks. Um, frankly, the bank across the street got turned into. Um, I believe it's a daycare now. Um. Uh, um, they, they built a new Sonic um, next to that, so, so there is some. There is some energy around redeveloping this area, so.
Jen, can you explain the um, why the uh, request line, not, you can explain, but. The line for the rezoning goes right through the middle of the one building. That fronts on.
I think.
Dual ownership or something?
Yeah, it's following parcel lines, so um, this is owned, this is uh. Oh, it's the same owner, but it looks like they're separate parcel lines. This is a parcel and this is a parcel, same ownership.
So our zoning request does not apply, the, the zoning request that we have before us does not apply to the separate parcel, which is half of the building essentially.
Uh, yes.
It's a, it's a separate building, I believe, right?
No.
Um, I think it maybe, let me try.
It is a separate building.
No.
Uh, I think it might be. Well, it's kind of split. Right down the center.
I.
It's a, it's a different um, roof line.
Yeah, there's a different roof line.
We, you look at it from the angle. Can't tell if they're attached or just right next, you know, just abutting each other.
So, this is the former Yukazu Books um, site, so they are attached, but they are not, um, so like two row homes might be. But they are not connected inside. From my, that's just from my experience of being in Yukazu Books. That has nothing to do with my professional experience. I like a bookstore.
When I look at the street view, the, like the brick lines and everything don't match up. There's, you can see a, a line running between the two buildings.
Yeah, Steve, after I got off the phone with you, I called around to a couple of people. It is two separate buildings. Cause I, I, I took what you were saying about that corner and, and called and, and I'm. I'm confident it's two buildings.
Okay, I just.
So.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks, Todd.
Yeah.
And David, the Yukazu.
I, I would love to rezone the other portion, but it wasn't, it wasn't put in, so I.
Yep.
I can't do something that's not put in.
Of course, just that, look, until you drill down, look odd. Okay, thank you.
I, I, I would love that opportunity.
Carefully when I go up there next time.
I think you said you, you go to the, the restaurant there to.
Well, I go to that stories.
Yeah. They're right across the street. I, I, I frequent the valley in there, so um, so again, I, I.
No, the Raven.
The Raven and not the Valley and Raven, and I'm sorry, different, different place, yeah, the, the Raven Inn. Um, so, um, again, so I, I would make the BM CCC my recommendation.
Is that your motion, Todd?
That's my motion.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any other questions or comments? Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Recuse.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up is six dash zero-zero-five, Ms. Brophy and Mr. Perlo. Ms. Brophy, do you want to start?
Sure, thanks. So um, a lot of you guys probably know this property. It's a former Sears building that's basically surrounded by major roadways such as Route forty-three and Bel Air Road. The current retailer in there after Sears left is like um, an appliance, a discount appliance and furniture store. Their lease is about to expire at the end of May and um, it's going to become basically a vacant, derelict property. Um. It is uh, consistent with master plan twenty-thirty. And um, it's basically to provide a redevelopment opportunity um, for this. So, I mean, I know, um, there's a lot of. Public opposition about AS, but in this case, considering it's surrounded by all the major roadways, I mean, I think this makes the most sense um, for the location. Um, did you want to add anything, Howard?
I would absolutely agree. I mean, I have always felt that on any of our major commercial carters, when you have. A piece of land this size that can be redeveloped. And um, you know, have access to many roads at that point from whatever. If a gas station is its future, I do believe it's there. I don't think, if you want to expand out on the map, I don't think there's anything. Um, of what we consider the newer gas stations right here. There are along. Um, the, you know, the whole. Street, so to speak, um. Uh, you know, on Bel Air Road, but um, you know, I think that. It's not an unreasonable request to use this site for that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Anything from the planning staff? All right, let's take a roll call, Mr. Array. Oh, Ms. Go ahead.
Did we make a motion? I'm sorry, I didn't remember.
Emily?
Sorry, I'll make the official one. And Kathy, I just want to say, look at that buffer zone. That's all I'm saying. Really big one there.
It's like a lot of trees.
I know.
You can't have too many, except at the airport.
That's right. I make a motion to grant the petitioner their request um, for the zoning change to BRAS.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Array?
Yes.
Ms. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. German?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Mr. Hinton?
Yes.
Mr. Halipka?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Perlo?
Yes.
Ms. Panero?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson?
Yes.
That's because you like the buffer. Okay, next, on to six dash zero-zero-six. Mr. Array and Mr. Perlo. Mr. Array? Would you like to begin?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm just making sure that uh, I think OR two zoning. Uh, gives the property owner the right to do anything, including anything that could be. Uh, detrimental to the neighborhood, you know, to this surrounding areas. So I'm just making sure that um. We put, give notice to the uh, you know, to the property owner. That it should not be. A blank check to do anything that he wanted. That property. So I'm not really. Opposed to the uh, staff recommendation.
Mr. Perlo?
Okay, I um, have had discussions with um. Petitioner and um, feel that it would be reasonable to have the OR two there at that point.
Madam Chair.
That's why I removed my sequester.
Madam Chair, if I may ask, Mr. Array, um, as. We have uh, seen other requests for covenants uh, on other issues. You said you don't want a blank check for the owner. Is there something specific that you want us to convey? Uh, if we move this forward?
Well, the thing is, right now, you know, you know, there's no plan. You know, there've been. No plans submitted, no discussion about what they want to do. We know that it is an office, you know, space building. But there's actually no plan, so provided they can work with the community. Uh, with a part work, yes, but can they work with the community to really make sure? That everybody's on board, that the community's on board also and protected.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? And if not hearing any, would someone, either Mr. Perlo or Mr. Array, like to make a motion or anyone else?
Mr. Array, you had, I was removing it, so you should make whatever motion you want.
Well, I move that um. The property owner works with the community to make sure. That nothing affects the surrounding community.
You, you have to, you'd have to say OR two.
Yes.
Or staff recommendations with something like, you have to come up with something.
Uh, yeah, yeah, so we, I support staff recommendation, are to conditions. That the property owner uh, actually works with the surrounding neighborhood. To make sure that everything is in the interest of both parties.
All right, Mr. Array has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I don't know that I completely understand how to do that, but I'll second it for him, but I don't know that um. I don't know that I completely understand how to do that, but I'll second it for him to, but I don't know that, um.
Well, it's a condition, you know, we put condition before.
Yeah, but a condition is you want a buffer, you want, uh, you know, you know, that they work with the community, every, every developer has to work with the community, so. I mean, I, 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 I second it, it's fine, it's fine, I, 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 I second that, whatever. I'm just, I don't know that you're getting what you want, Mr. Array, that's what I'm trying to.
Okay. So I am moving that we accept staff recommendation.
Okay, you're moving, okay, thank you. All right.
Then I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, great. All right, then Mr. Array. I.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Is Mr. McGinnis back on or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And how do you vote, Mr. McGinnis? Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Perlo.
I recuse myself from the vote.
Okay, Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Okay, next.
Madam Chair.
Motion.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry to do this again, but if an individual planning board member expects that they're going to recuse themselves from any vote, they should not even comment on the issue.
Mr. Lafferty, you asked, I tried to remove my sequester so I wouldn't have to, I apologize, but Mr. Array did, so I just gave my comment that that's what I wanted to say, not about the property at all.
Okay, on to zero dash zero zero seven, Mr. Perlo.
We have Joppa Road up. Um, again, on the major arteries, I've always been supportive of allowing an AS, um, especially when it's in a, you know, commercial area like this. Um, doesn't always mean it's going to be a gas station. It could be a car wash. It could be a, a Jiffy Lube. It could be a lot of different things. Um, I don't think it affects anybody, um, in these areas, you know, housing wise, and I don't believe that it's unreasonable um, to make it a BM AS and have a, a value and a redevelopment of this property.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Chairman, I'll quickly mention that this property, uh, currently has a, a, a development plan in the works, going through the process for a car wash. Um, so we're not quite sure from the planning department side, what the order of operations, if you will, is between the zoning request, the existing, um, the existing, the existing, uh, development plan. Um, so that's just for the board's information that there is currently a request for a car wash and we haven't been, uh, informed of a larger plan, if you will.
So I would. It's only one point one acres. You can't really build much, uh, when, when you couldn't put a row farms there, it would be too small, so. Uh, it's probably going to be a car wash. So I would second that, Howard.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the petitioner's request of BM AS on the one point one one acre.
I would second that.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the staff? Then we'll do a roll call. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Perlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
And Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is up six zero two four, Mr. Array.
Yes, um, I'm requesting that, uh, uh, the zoning be either DR, uh, ten five for everything or DR sixteen. Uh, this is, this, this property sits on a wetland also. It's a part of, uh, Huron Water Share. Uh, there will be so many environmental issues. So that is why I did like this. And it is also a site for freed slaves, uh, way back in eighteen fifties. And I know that that site, you know, the baseball field was destroyed, neighborhood, uh, living homes, I mean, homes have been leveled in that area. I, I think there will be environmental issues, but as for the zoning, requesting that everything be DR ten five or DR sixteen. And what, whatever the, the.
The staff's recommending, like, so you don't agree with the staff's recommendation? That's not the requesters' recommendation?
That, that is not, but I'm saying DR sixteen will work better. Of course, they can be up to thirty-two units of DR sixteen.
So the council person that made the petition?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
I get, I guess, Mr. Array, just explain, I, I don't. You're saying it's, it's, oh, they asked for OR two for a piece of it.
Yes.
It's currently, it's currently RA two, they're saying RA two, the ten point five and the ten. Are you saying you don't want any RA E at all? You want to take that all away?
Yeah, I want, I'm proposing DR sixteen. Or DR ten five for everything.
What, what's on the property now can, can, is, but I don't know what RA E is, but what?
RA, RA is apartment elevators, um, Todd.
Okay.
It's like, um, what, eighty units per acre or something, some crazy.
Yeah, RA one is forty per acre and then it's eighty acre, eighty per acre, like you said, Kathy, for RA two, so.
So if he went with ten point five for the entire parcel, he would have eight units.
Well, he can be up to twenty-four units.
So you're saying sixteen, is that what you're trying to say?
Sixteen, yes.
DR sixteen.
Yes.
So I don't know.
So I, I, I.
But there's a comment that says there's a vested development plan already on the site. Does, does anybody know what that development plan is?
That's Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I may. Uh, this is the site of a already approved development plan for Red Maple Apartments. Uh, that is an affordable housing development that has state low income housing tax credits already awarded for the site. It has been very contentious when the county council approved the, uh, funding for this. Um, it allowed it to move forward. Uh, subsequently, there's been significant opposition from, uh, the neighboring community and others, including Harris Hill, which is immediately to its east, which is that built out community. Uh, it has gone all the way through the Court of Appeals in Maryland, uh, upholding the county's decision to allow the development to go forward. It is now in the appeals process before the Maryland Supreme Court. The county has supported this development project, uh, including at the time, uh, the councilman who represented the area. Uh, Red Maple is intended to provide affordable units. The, uh, the environmental issues and let me back up for a moment and say I totally respect Mr. Array's raising this issue. Um, the, the environmental issues have been addressed through our Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability and are being addressed at the lower end along Pennsylvania Avenue, including stormwater runoff that will be, uh, channelized into pipes that have to be expanded by the developer in order to manage the water runoff because the topography runs off from Joppa Road down to Pennsylvania Avenue. Uh, it has a flat that's already been recorded and therefore is already vested claim. Uh, county has been fully supportive of this development from its inception and remains committed to it and also remains committed to working with East Houston neighborhood that this is, will be built in. Uh, we're continually in conversations with the residents or the residential leaders about improvements in the community, including funding, uh, to support improvements to the lodge and other parts of the property. Uh, but I don't want to mislead anybody. It's extremely contentious. Uh, it has unfortunately created, at least in my personal opinion, a schism uh, that is not healthy because it's suggested that this is uh, against a historic African-American community. East Towson is, was, uh, settled by those who were enslaved at Hampton Mansion and therefore has a history that goes back a couple of hundred years in its significance in this area. Uh, but as to this particular parcel, uh, there is a vested and recorded flat on the site. Uh, and, um, the county remains committed to seeing residential development at this location.
Thank you, Mr. Lafferty.
Steve, does this also affect, uh, our MOU with the government? Is this, would this help with that?
This does help to address the, uh, obligation we have on voluntary compliance agreement with the federal government.
Okay, so, thank you. So I will move then to support staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Perlo.
Yes, and I believe the Court of the New Supreme Court of Maryland has found in favor of the county within the last ten days, I thought.
Thank you. Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes, again.
I have to ask the roll call.
You didn't call me.
If I leave you off.
But you missed, you missed Mr. Johnson.
Oh, Lord. It's a cocktail.
Yes.
Okay, believe it or not, this is the last issue. So six, six dash zero three three, Ms. Panero.
So I'll try to keep this short and sweet, um, try being the key word. Um, this is one of the, another example of it, uh, no change. Um, this was to spark, um, conversation with the community. Um, the motion will be to, uh, change the existing OR two to DR five five. Oh, wait, let's take it there. The OR two, excuse me, the RO, existing RO, which is one point five nine acres, to OR two for one five, one point five nine acres. Um, this is a development or project that all of us are most likely familiar with, given its proximity to where we hold our planning board meeting, uh, planning board meetings. It's across the street from the new Towson Fire Station. It is just, um, um, above where the, that little court of the little jail used to be that is now, um, um, offices. Uh, these are the townhouses. They look like townhomes and they, they, from the outside, but they actually act as offices. Um, the request is for OR two because it's less restrictive than OR. Uh, it'll give them a more viable use, give them more flexibility um, to do, uh, offices, to do doctors', medical space, the doctor's offices. Um, they have been in, in touch with the community because the community is directly behind them. Um, and the conversation will continue. Um, and that's, that's it. I'm ready to motion if no one has any questions.
I, I believe the attorney that was the family member came to the meeting and there was no objections at that and he, he was, uh, did I remember of, and, uh, I think the families owned this property for a very long time, so.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments? Then Ms. Panero, do you want to make a motion?
Uh, yes, I motion to, um, change, I mean, sorry, I'm not on my laptop. I left it at work, so I'm going to change those. I get this correct. Motion to change the existing O, excuse me, RO designation to OR two designation.
And leave the DR five point five as is?
Yes, that is fine.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Array.
Yes.
Ms. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. German.
Yes.
Mr. Hafer.
Yes.
Mr. Hinton.
Yes.
Mr. Halipka. Mr. Halipka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson. I thought I saw him on there. Mr. McGinnis.
Yes.
Mr. Perlo.
Yes.
Ms. Panero.
Yes.
Mr. Warren.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Board members, that's the conclusion of our sequestered issues for District Six. And then that's the conclusion of our agenda as well. Um, I know tomorrow night, the planning board has another meeting. I saw a public meeting. I know you guys are very busy, but as a reminder, our next work session will be this Thursday, April eighteenth. We will be discussing sequestered issues in Council District Four and Seven. Please submit any sequestered issues in those two districts by four PM tomorrow, Wednesday, April seventeenth. And boy, do I have a motion to adjourn.
Second, do, we don't have a meeting tomorrow, right? Like.
No, we have a meeting on Thursday.
Okay, you said something about having a meeting tomorrow.
The planning staff, Todd.
Okay, all right.
Not the planning board.
Nancy, this is that, I got, um, my sister froze, so can I vote for the?
Yes, you can. Staff, would you hear that he wants to, um, approve number thirty-three? Also, he.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Also a reminder to the board that actually we begin our meeting at four thirty on Thursday to take up the annual growth report. And, and they will, and then we'll follow on with the, um, the meeting regarding the work, the work session regarding the CZMP issues.
Okay, thank you for adding that, Mr. Lafferty.
Are they in person or is that all remote?
It's all virtual. It's all virtual. Uh, you can show up in person, Todd.
I'll come hang out with you. I'll bring food.
Okay, that'd be cool. What are you bringing?
You name it.
All right, is there any other good of the all or is everybody good of the all to go?
Good to go.
All right, thank you all. Thank you. I really appreciate it. Have a wonderful, safe night.
Thank you.